We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss some personnel matters. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moriarty.
Wendy Sampson.
Willow Bear.
And Judy Kehoe.
Do we have any PIG students with us tonight? Yes, welcome. Your obligation is to stay until the meeting is over or nine o'clock, whichever comes first. And if we go past nine, we will take a break at that point so that you can come up. There are sign out sheets up here for you to sign out, and if you need a signature, you can see any of the Board members. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 26th, 2020 regular Board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Do we have anyone with us tonight from the Student Senate?
Recently in Student Senate...
You could just lift it up.
Recently in Student Senate, we've been working to approve a few clubs. So on our agenda, we have the You Are Not Alone Club and the Hiking Club. So we've been having discussions about it in the homeroom. This last Saturday, we had two Student Senators, Caroline Wise and Kirsten Murray, go to the Bethlehem Community Fund, Y and Bash, and talk about the Backpack Program. And they've been giving us donations for the past couple of years, so we're hoping to get another donation this year. They seemed pretty enthused with the Backpack Program, so we think we'll get the donation. The Courtyard Committee has been working very hard to get donations, and that's basically where we're at right now.
What is the You Are Not Alone Club?
It's just a club where students get together to talk. If they feel they don't have many friends in school, they'll get together and just talk about their problems together after school in like a safe environment.
Great. Thank you.
I actually have another question. When you talk about improving clubs, are you talking about improving membership, or is there some sort of review in terms of what clubs are doing?
I, sorry, I must have misspoke. I meant like approve the clubs.
Oh, approving.
Yeah, so we just like vote on the clubs. Usually it's not a problem with basketball.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is there anyone here from the middle school tonight? I don't think so, but just checking. Okay. Next is our Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. I thought I'd give a construction update this week, since Mr. Nolte is here, be presenting. If you have specific questions, you can direct them towards him. So just to highlight some of the kind of more significant work. D-122, the renovations did begin once the LMC opened here. Espesas abatement was done over the break. The windows have been installed and furniture has been ordered. The goal is to have that completed by the time AP exams are being administered, so May sometime. You can see the high school, the new Eagle snacks, this was all petitioned off, is completed. It looks great. The auditorium, the roof deck was completed a few weeks ago. The ceiling was painted, so they're installing the acoustical river rocks. About a third of them are hung, and we still haven't been on the tour, but we'll get there some, one of these weeks. The auditorium seating has been ordered, as well as some of the AB equipment is starting to arrive. You saw on B Wing, the renovations for bathrooms, we're continuing that work, the high school bathrooms. Transportation, the employee training room has been completed. Elsmere, they're still working on the bathroom in the gym. Demolition and abatement occurred over the break, and new hoops and wall pads were also installed. The high school and middle school pool renovation, the middle school pool is scheduled to be shut down March 16th. That's still true, I believe, and that work will continue into the beginning of the year. And also at the middle school, the upper gym bleachers were removed, abatement was completed. The middle school kitchen freezer was installed, and they've actually been able to work on the baseball field, believe it or not, because we've had such a mild winter. And spring sports are starting in Monday, so hopefully we don't get any more snow this year. I'd also like to congratulate all of our winner athletes for their success in many teams in postseason play. I believe most of our teams are finished at this point, except hockey, who won last night in sectional finals. Congratulations to them, and they will be playing in the regionals this Saturday at Union at four o'clock. So all of our teams, again, represented the district very well, and I'd like to congratulate all of them for successful seasons. Also, today, I was able to go over and see the Fifth Grade Musical. It's the 50th anniversary. Mr. Vitor and several of the staff put it together. It's about the history of the musical. It was really great, and I'd like to thank the staff and the parents, obviously, who helped put the show together. And finally, I've had several calls and emails about what we're doing in regards to the coronavirus. I know that there are some rumors circulating that we have students who are quarantined or possibly at risk, and I want to reiterate, it's not true. They are simply rumors. We've been in regular communication with the Department of Health about any issues that have been brought to our attention, and we're following and will continue to follow their guidance and any recommendations they have. And that's my report.
Great. Any questions for Jody?
Are they, they said they took out the bleachers in the upper gym. Are they putting new ones in, or is that a permanent thing?
Yes, they're, they're not, do you know when they'll be? When?
New floor, bleachers, everything. We just gotta wait till people are using it.
So summer? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is the Board Report. First, I just wanted to congratulate the BOU on a successful Spelling Bee event last night, and it's a, must be a huge amount of work to put that together. And a special note for Mr. Kay and Mr. Klugman, who were the emcee of the event and read all the words, respectively. This coming, is it Saturday is the Lab School Barbecue? And Jonathan, I don't know if you know if it's too late still for, for people to get food, but...
No, it's come to the, come to the banquet. My understanding is that they're not taking any pre-orders now, but if you come, you'll get fed. Just make sure you're there, I would say, before 4:30, just to be on the safe side. But there's plenty of chicken, plenty of ribs. Come.
And I look forward to seeing the Fifth Grade Musical tomorrow night. I'm gonna go then, but I hear good things.
That's good.
Thanks for not, you know, spilling the beans about what the whole thing is about.
No, no. There's a lot of little details in there.
Good. We'll look forward to it tomorrow night. I also went to the Spelling Bee yesterday, and in addition to Mr. Kay and Mr. Klugman, both Mr. Domell and, and Mrs. Coleman. And I don't know who the third judge was. I missed that. Maybe you know? But, but they, they also did a, a, a good job of figuring out who was right and who was wrong. And Heidi, not Heidi, Holly's team ended up second.
In our swarm.
In your swarm.
Only in our swarm.
And my wife's team ended up about fourth, I think, in their swarm.
I learned some new words.
Yeah, I think we all did. It was, it was a well-done program. They do it every year. It's a great fundraiser, and I think the only negative was the rain, because it held back some of the crowd.
Anybody else?
I, I attended the Slingerlands Musical this afternoon. I also wanted to say it was wonderful, and thank you to all the staff and teachers and parents who volunteered. It must have taken a lot of work. And the students did wonderfully. I'm so proud of all of them. And I won't spill the beans as to the plot twists, but I will say that I love the fact that they honor the history of Slingerlands and some of our teachers, past and present. It was really wonderful. So 50 years of Slingerlands Musicals. It's so impressive.
Anything?
I just wanted to follow up quickly on the K-8 device policy that we approved and issued last week. I think we all braced to receive feedback, and I've received a lot of very positive feedback and no negative feedback, and I was curious how implementation was going and any feedback loops you were getting from teachers or administrators in those buildings.
I've only had positive feedback. I had a couple questions about students who have some special needs and what to, how to best address that, but other than that, every, all the responses have been positive.
Great. Thanks. That was it.
Next is our presentation for this evening. We're going to have our 2020-2021 budget presentation on athletics and operations and maintenance by Mr. Keyes and Mr. Nolte. And first introduction.
Good evening, everybody. It was only a week ago, we did our first rollout of the budget, where we're trying to tie together the funding sources for all of the strategic goals for the district. We went through the areas of the administrative district-wide costs and transportation, technology, and then the other district-wide costs for fringe benefits and debt service. Tonight, we'll cover O and M and athletics, and then in two weeks, on the 18th, we'll have Mr. Hurst and Ms. Johnston covering general ed and special ed. Based on maintaining the same services that we have in this current year's budget and enrolling those costs into the next fiscal year, our baseline budget for starting our sessions, our discussions, is 103,992. The revenues that we have, keeping our property tax levy flat and then subtracting out the baseline expenditures, gives us a preliminary gap of just under $2.1 million. At each session, we'll cover the requested additions. Transportation's changes were budget neutral. There were some reconfigurations of staffing, but no net cost increase to the budget, and technology had a $14,000 staffing impact request. We will be able to close this gap as we go through the coming weeks, even as we listen to the other requests for additions or reductions in the budget. We do have the ability to set our tax levy. The maximum allowable tax levy, calculated in accordance with the tax cap regulations, is 2.34%. So if we were to increase taxes, that would be just under a $1.6 million increase to the budget. We are also working to finalize our calculations on savings from staff who retire, the differential in their salaries between where they're retiring at and the new staff coming onboard. We have a range, say $500,000 approximately, so that, too, will go a long way in helping close this gap. So we always urge nobody to panic when they see that gap amount. We have the tools to close that as we go through the process. So that is probably the most abbreviated budget recap you've ever had, but that's because we've only had a one-week turnaround. So at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Keyes, and then we'll be prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you, Judy. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to share our 2021 proposed budget. I always like to start every year, as, as you may know, just to kind of remind us of the, the breadth and depth of our interscholastic athletics program. So in total, we have 81 teams, 30 at the varsity level, 22 junior varsity, five freshman teams, 22 modified, which would be modified nines and modifieds, and of course, we have our two unified teams, which would be unified bowling and basketball. So our athletics budget overview, these are items that are consolidated, just for kind of ease of understanding. Of course, there are other non-athletic-coded items, which would fall under items that Mr. Nolte oversees, such as our groundskeeping department, Cindy Juriewitz, who oversees our transportation. Obviously, we have many bus runs that go to and from interscholastic athletics contests, but these are the nuts and bolts of the program. So starting off at the top, our coaches, our athletic chaperones, our district athletic trainer, we have a slight increase, our contractual increase, I believe, is 3.14%. So you see a slight increase there. Equipment is staying static, just the, the default of the $5,000 equipment piece. The next one, we have a slight increase, officials' fees and security, but there are many items, and I'll show you. This breaks down the main pieces to that. So we have our officials' fees. There is a new contract between Section 2 and the officials' organizations with a slight increase. Our ice rental fees over at the Bethlehem YMCA. Our entry fees for invitationals, track and field invitationals, wrestling tournaments, those sorts of, of contests. Our lifeguarding fees, police coverage for varsity events, and our state-mandated equipment reconditioning items, which currently New York State mandates that we recondition football helmets and shoulder pads. There is more and more buzz, where obviously, safety, particularly head trauma safety, is becoming a bigger and a bigger, and rightfully so, item of con, of, of discussion. We are probably looking at within the next two years where boys' lacrosse helmets, softball helmets, baseball helmets will probably need to be reconditioned as well. The state is telling us that we will have at least a year's notice, though, as, as Judy knows, they sprung the, the Noxy baseballs on us the last second this year or so, but we will start to become prepared for those items. So going back, BOSEs and other program expenses. So for BOSEs, we contract through BOSEs because they're aidable items. The two that we utilize in our program would be Schedule Galaxy, which is our league scheduling system, as well as the Huddle System, which includes all the video programming, is used as an instructional resource, it's used for scouting, and that also includes the live-streaming camera that we have in Gym B. And you see the, the slight increase there. So budget to budget, we're looking at a $20,270 increase. Questions? So the one item, oh, sorry, skipped a slide. This just breaks down our program into a little bit more depth. So out of the 81 total teams, 15 of, of the programs are, out of the 30, are 15 are varsity girls, 15 are varsity boys. Our three co-ed programs would be our two unified, unified bowling, unified basketball, as well as our middle school swim program. Our modified swim team is, is coeducational. We have a total of 108 district coaches, which are part of our budget. We have an additional 16 program assistants, which would be booster-funded assistants, and we have eight pure volunteers, where they all meet SED requirements, they're all Board of Education-appointed, but they are pure volunteers. So that's where you see the 81 teams broken down further, 35 in the fall, 23 in the winter and the spring. And for the 18-19 school year, we had over 1,700 student athletes. The one budget request that I put for, before you would be the addition of a standalone varsity girls' golf team. This past fall, Section 2 piloted girls' golf for the very first time, and Bethlehem did field a team. We had, we were allowed a maximum of four female golfers, and what they did was, they basically joined our boys' team, they would golf first, same location, and of course, we were maxed out at only four. Taking the opportunity, if we possibly can, to add a standalone program would allow us to really grow our girls' golf program, and I'm very confident that we have the interest in our student body, we have the interest in our community, and fortunately, we have two local golf courses that we currently utilize for our junior varsity and varsity boys' programs, and we would be able to negotiate, you know, a, a good, not only a good fiscally responsible price, but also have our girls have the opportunity to utilize driving ranges and putting greens, and of course, the course. So just broken down, approximately $3,000 would be the cost of adding greens fees. The $1,200 for transportation would be the cost of league matches, the suburban council championship that, that we, that they have at the end of the season, sectionals. Supplies would include tees, golf bags, uniforms, which would basically be polos and skirts. And the Step 1 coaching stipend would be $2,100, so totaling $8,900. And currently, Shaker and Shenandoah do have that in place. Saratoga is also proposing, as we are, possibly for 2021.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Yep.
Golf clubs are pretty expensive, a set of golf clubs. Are each athlete, are they expected to have their own set?
Yeah, student athletes in our golf program historically have their own golf clubs. Golf clubs are pretty, you know, personal, to a personal, you know, touch and things of that nature, grips. And we do have some that are probably, probably at least, the newest ones are probably about a dozen years old, but we have, our students who participate in JV varsity boys right now have always supplied their own clubs. Our, our program, I'm sorry.
Do we have anything in place to help someone who perhaps want to join the golf team but does not have the means to buy their own set?
We have a, we have booster clubs for every one of our programs, and the way it has always worked is if there's a student involved or has an interest in being involved, that's the route that traditionally they've taken, is gone to the booster club, and of course, the booster club can always come to me if I'm made aware of it by the coach.
Okay.
Typically, the coach will come to me. Previously, we've had minor situations, not anything of an expensive golf clubs, but more items like cleats or a softball glove, and we've been able to arrange that.
Okay. Thank you.
How many, go ahead. How many girls could play?
Well, our boys' teams are between 15 and 20. You don't want to have too much, because you want to be able to, you know, have them fit, and we also, of course, don't want to upset golf course management. Norman Side being a private club, we have to be careful in Capitol Hills. But probably between 15 and 20, and what we could even do, what we've done with our boys' program, is have exhibition golfers, where periodically, they can also get out onto the course, they'll be more developmental golfers, new to the sport, but have access to the putting greens and the driving range and get familiar with the sport.
Okay. I just had a question, not on the golf, but on, there had been discussions last year about adding modified tennis to...
Yes.
So I just wanted to see how those conversations have come along in regards to adding that in suburban council.
As you can imagine, Scott George and myself have spoken many times. Of course, Coach Smith is very much in favor. I am very in favor of it. I think it'll only solidify our already very strong girls' and boys' programs. The issue we're facing is that there are no modified Section 2 teams. Currently, the only school that expressed any interest at all is Saratoga Springs, and we really need to have at least four schools.
Okay.
But what we are looking at, you might remember the Friendship Games from back in the day, more of like an extra mural, and that's something that we could actually work out between ourselves, Saratoga, and Shaker has expressed lukewarm interest, and where basically, we could have a coach, one of our tennis coaches, we have obviously multiple volunteer assistants, we have program assistants, in addition to our, our excellent staff, who already have, have expressed interest in being a part of that. So we're looking for at least three or four play dates and trying to make that happen next fall and next spring for the girls and the boys.
If there is an interest between the, in the suburban council schools that comes to fruition over the summer or the fall, would you look to add it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Both genders, clearly.
Because we definitely, probably, in Bethlehem, have the interest to field modified teams at the middle school and develop the program even more at the high school.
Easily. We would easily do it. It's, we have to remember one piece, though. We're also very, very fortunate in that we, along with Saratoga, are the only middle schools that have tennis courts.
Yep.
Most of the other middle schools in our league do not, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why.
Okay.
But the, the absolute second, it's a possibility, we've, I've been asking for it for three years now, so I'm aware of it. I did want to provide an update. You might recall, last year, we discussed modified girls' soccer and the numbers. We said it might be like two years, we would look at it every two years. So we had a total of 13 young ladies for our 7-8 modified. So we have a modified nine and a modified. So the modified 7-8 were the numbers that I was concerned about the last few years. We had 13 when the season began. We had one young lady go down with a rather serious knee injury a couple games in, giving us 12. Obviously, you need 11 on the field, so that gave the coach one substitute. Obviously, children get sick, they don't come to school, and it even did, rare, but it also did prevent the coach from those teachable moments, if a student were to not come to practice for a couple of days, and obviously, they shouldn't be rewarded by starting and playing the entire game. So we are moving into year two, and we're going ahead with it. We're hoping for much better participation numbers, but I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that.
And we also talked last year about baseball. Can you give us an update on that as well?
The baseball numbers are very strong. We're very happy, all levels, from modified freshman, junior varsity, and varsity. We had interest meeting yesterday for our freshmen, JV and varsity. Obviously, these students have already signed up with the health office and have gone, are in the midst of getting through that approval from our school physician's office for tryouts on Monday. The numbers are about 40 at the varsity, just for trying out for varsity alone, in the upper 20s for junior varsity, 20s for freshmen, and in the high 20s to low 30s for modified. So that has been very strong. The modified softball, unfortunately, is the exact opposite. You might recall, we had two mod softball teams, again, a mod nine and a mod. We had 12 girls signed up, and that's seventh and eighth grade, 12 girls signed up, two of which have never played the sport before, so the only, which is not a problem, we just, of course, have to make sure they're safe playing the sport, but we are still, again, concerned about softball. Remember, we had cut last year's modified because of the lack of interest. So that's kind of an update on those. I will say, the freshman girls' volleyball that we added this year was a huge success. Again, we had in the 30s come out for the team, so that was a huge success. And our numbers are exactly where we expected with the modified girls' and boys' lacrosse teams that we added. This will be our first spring, where we have a Bethlehem black and orange, and it'll be wonderful, because our kids will actually get playing time at that developmental level. So looking forward to seeing that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Regarding the, the two modified teams that you indicated were struggling, the softball and the soccer, is there anything that we can be doing to increase participation levels?
I know that the middle school physical education department is constantly discussing it. We have signage up, announcements, we've extended the signup period. I know the youth programs have, have expressed it, those that tie into the district, that feed into the district. Soccer's always unique, because there are a lot of soccer academies, a lot of soccer travel organizations. We always hope to have a positive relationship with them. Sometimes, they really do advertise that they are offering a better level of training, so sometimes, we are finding that younger athletes are kind of going off more to the travel, where back in the, back when, in the day, school was the priority. You wanted to be on your school team, and then the travel clubs were kind of secondary. We're finding, across the board, but in particular, soccer and lacrosse, those are struggles that we see, all public schools, not just ours.
I do have one more question. In regards to assistant coaches, did you have any requests this year for assistant coaches that we're not going to add, or?
I, there were two on my original draft. One was a modified swim assistant. We have very strong numbers in our swim. Obviously, our girls' and boys' swim programs are outstanding, and it feeds all the way down to our modified level. So a modified assistant swim coach to assist in those numbers, in the 40s, on a pole deck, two genders, that would be very, very helpful. I believe that's around $1,600 for a Step 1 stipend, and a third district varsity assistant football coach. We are the only double-A school in our section that does not have three. All the others in our league that we play against have three. Obviously, safety, position specialization is, you know, a lot of reasons, but those were the totals.
How many swimmers are there that?
The modified? This year, we're 43, 44. Every year, Coach Banis does a remarkable job of balancing it out. This year, Jody and I spoke about what ideas we could do right away, and thankfully, Coach McGann, Pierre, who assisted Sandy greatly, really, basically as a volunteer, and she was there three days a week to assist, and at all our swim meets. If that position was one that we were able to add, I'm sure she would apply for it, and she's, obviously runs our town of Bethlehem swim program at the parks, and so that would be a big help. And, and obviously, better safety and supervision.
Yeah. I don't know what the Board thinks about... I don't know what the board thinks about looking at that.
Or it's on the secondary list right now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing. Congratulations. You may have won the award recently, and I don't think we've ever congratulated you on your...
I did. Thank you very, very much.
Regional Athletic Director of the Year Award.
Thank you.
That's a big deal, and thank you for all of your reference.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, then I have to follow that up with an extra question. The last slide had a $5,000 line for equipment that you described as a default, and so...
Right.
Can you tell us what we spent that on last year and what we think we might spend that on this year?
Sure. Next year, I'm looking at trophy cases for the gym B lobby. The ones we have are overflowing. And unfortunately, sometimes items that we really don't want to take out, I would still like to have on display, are taken out. They're, they're very costly. They're roughly about 17, $1,800 apiece. So we would be looking at two of those, as well as a replacement gymnastics piece of equipment that Coach Bouchard has requested for a couple of years. This year, what we did, equipment wise, we purchased two very large protective screens for softball program and the baseball program. That'll allow us to better utilize, you know, break up into different groups safely. Those were both big ticket items. And we also purchased a volleyball machine, serving machine, blocking machine. I believe it's called a hack attack. Thank you.
My presentation won't be as short as yours. However, I did, as I was going through the presentation and preparing for it, I realized that it's virtually exactly like last year, which is a good thing. So I will shorten my narrative, ask questions as we kind of go through. And if you want me to ramble on, I'd be happy to. Operations and maintenance. We are the cost center for basically all of the district's operations. These include everything from maintenance services to all the facilities, costs regarding the facilities, the grounds, utilities, custodial services, and health and safety. We also oversee the, the current $32 million bond project, which we are about 60% completed at this point. Hopefully, we'll be all done by, by the fall. So. I'm going to start with the bottom line. We basically have presented somewhat of a flat budget. We're looking at a 0.7, 8% increase, which is very similar to last year. You'll see salaries increased slightly due to contractual obligations that we have. Equipment and special projects, I'll talk about a little bit later and in more detail. Utilities. I kept both natural gas and electric the same. This is the final year of our natural gas. Fixed rate that we buy through our consortium with OCM BOCs. So they'll be going out the bid probably in the next six months or so, and then we'll see what that rate may, may not be. The electric, I kept the same. And as you may know, we have completed our 2.1 megawatt solar array, and we got our permission to operate last June 5th. So basically, that array is providing about 85% of the district's electric needs. So we are now purchasing not through OCM BOCs, but through Forefront. And it's through a power purchase agreement. It's a 20-year agreement with them. And there's a number of cost variables, but I feel that this budget can basically kind of remain flat, all right? What's interesting is that the rate of the first couple of years of the PPA is higher than, than the rate, and it's a fixed rate for 20 years. So overall, I think we're going to be able to save anywhere from about $700,000 to 1.7, no, 1.7 million over the course of 20 years with this agreement. All right? Contracted services went up slightly. A lot of that increase had to do with increased recycling costs. We are now paying for our disposal, our recycling of paper, which we didn't have to do. So there was that. So overall, a 0.7% increase, I'm sorry, yeah, 0.7% increase is a good thing. Salaries, we're not asking for any new people. It's the 58 that we have. However, we are finding some struggles with some of the new spaces that we're getting through the construction project. It's different cleaning than what we've been used to. It's more detailed. If you've been in the library, it's a whole different animal in there. So with the turning over of new spaces, we're kind of assessing and adjusting to make sure that we maintain all of this new stuff that, that we're getting. Subs, miscellaneous, miscellaneous is summer help, night bonus, insurance buyouts. This increased slightly, and also includes the rate increase for subs to $13 that happened last year as well. We track our overtime, and we basically have three categories. One is a use of facilities, which is outside groups, school facilities, or school activities, and the last is custodial maintenance. But we track everything, and most of this overtime is on the weekends. Equipment and vehicles. This is actually the fourth year that I've decreased this line item. Last year, it was $235,000. This is actually going to be the second year of the furniture program. You see that at $75,000 there. We have formed a committee with principals and teachers, and the district architect, and a furniture vendor to identify the needs. So you'll see operationally that I think we've been replacing a lot of equipment, and I think that we're seeing the benefits of that newer equipment and newer vehicles by reduced repair costs. So an item to consider to help possibly balance the overall budget is to possibly reduce the furniture line item I just talked about by, say, $25,000. This project is currently underway. We are gathering input, and we probably will not be placing an order till the next few months towards the end of the, the school year. So, you know, given this timing, it would be a relatively painless reduction if that's something that the board wants to consider.
Are we, I'm just confused by the numbers. Are we proposing to reduce the 75 by 25, which would actually be 50, or are we?
Correct.
Wasn't 50 what was originally suggested in the board last year?
Yep.
Was concerned that we hadn't purchased in a long time, so we increased it.
Correct.
Okay.
The 75 that's in there, it's because that was in the rollover budget. So it's in there, that, and so the 25 would be reduced from that.
And you're proposing this for this year, or what about future years, are you?
I think this is going to develop as we see what is desired by the committees. We actually created two different committees, one being secondary and then one being elementary. And we're going to come up with a standard. And we may try certain items, you know, and have some pilots with the money that we can, or with the furniture that we can buy now. And then at that point, maybe discuss long-term, you know, as far as how do we want to, how do we want to accomplish that goal? Thank you.
So you feel comfortable with reducing it this year?
For next year.
For next year's budget?
Yeah. You know, I mean, this was meant to be a, a multi-year program, okay, just because furniture is very, very expensive. All right? So 25, I mean, time will tell, I guess.
Okay. So at the end, we're gonna, are we going to see like primary, secondary, and talk about this, if maybe this is something that might bump up? Because we just talked about it last year and changed it, so it doesn't make sense to go back.
Well, we originally requested $50,000, and the board suggested to get a little extra. And we had the, the funding last year to do it, to bump it to 75. But our original request was to build in. We hadn't had any line item for furniture at all. So the goal was to have a stable line item so we could regularly replace.
And your anticipation was, if I remember correctly, was $50,000 a year to build in. So we're going back to the original request.
Correct.
Did we, last year, did we spend the 75?
No, we're still, that's what Greg's talked about. We're, we haven't ordered the furniture yet, one, because we've had all of the other construction work, but there's committees in place to select. What is the classroom, look at primary, intermediate, and then we will order that before the end of the year.
So this really would be a painless reduction?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry if I wasn't clear. Special projects, same budget value as, as last year. We are out there a lot amongst all of our schools. We have teachers and principals sending us work orders through our online system. We meet with the principals. We have lists that we, projects that we complete in-house, projects that maybe we, larger projects that we may put into a capital, a project, projects that we may do in-house, or maybe some that might be worth a capital outlay. So for this year, these are the projects that we kind of came up with. You know, we try to accommodate as much as we can. You'll see projects here that help program, one being the middle school pit conversion. We had an old records room down there that kind of remained vacant, so to make it compliant, that could be used for staff instruction or student instruction for another phys ed station. We're going to modify this area, and that's, that's what that project is. We also have some projects that include building security, there being some modifications to the front entrance of the middle school, and some purchasing some door locks. This would be the final phase of our quick button lock that we've pretty much completed just about all of, of the schools. This would complete that aspect of it. And then the last is what I'll call helping high classroom temperatures. Last year, we put a solar film, reflective film on a lot of the second floor classrooms. This was done in the fall of this past year. We haven't really seen the effects of that solar, and it's basically to reduce solar gain. So it's done a lot alone, D wing here in the southern-facing classrooms. So it's, sure, it's not going to hurt in any way, so we thought that we would just continue on. And again, it's, it's something pricey, so we're going to pick away and evaluate.
Have you had feedback that it is helping at all in the classroom that it did?
No, because we haven't had warm days yet.
I see.
We didn't, we didn't, by the time we got our prices and, we didn't put it in probably till September, October of last year.
Okay.
Since you don't have feedback yet, it's one thing to put it in the budget, it's another thing to actually spend it. Do you want to wait until, have you thought about waiting until you have some feedback as to whether it works or not before you put it on other classroom windows?
We know it's going to work, okay? Just by design. How effective is it going to be? We'll, we'll talk about this, the fan program that we had. We established some fans, some ceiling fans, and some floor fans. That test wasn't overly impactful, at least from the feedback that we got from teachers, because you're still just circulating...
Hot air.
You know, hot air. You know, there were some noise issues that we tried, even though we got quiet fans. So, you know, this will help, okay, from the, you know, but will it be, will it be effective, you know? Will it make that much of a difference? I don't know. But it's a step in the right direction. Yeah, I think, and I'll talk a little bit about the survey and some of my thoughts on that. So we can talk in a little bit. The capital outlay, this is actually our eighth capital outlay. And the rules for this type of program are very restrictive. To have it designed, completed all within the year is very, very difficult, including going through SED. So we look at a very defined, concentrated, maybe single trade type of, of a project. So this has been on our radar. It's actually upgrading the middle school elevator, one of them. Basically, putting in new controllers, the cab itself, and other components. And of course, we get, we'll get building aid the following year.
What's the, is there an anticipated cost on that?
Right around $100,000. So just some comments on the recent district survey. With the, the help of the district's communications office, they worked with us and created this great flyer that we have been sending out each, the beginning of each school year. And basically, this is, we want this to introduce O and M to both staff and to students. You know, it's, it's very difficult for us to fix things if we don't know that, what, you know, if it's broken. So this gives them an opportunity that if they have either a concern about the cleanliness or a heat complaint, or smells, or safety, that they can, they can look at this document and kind of see where to go. We have a lot of new staff coming in, and, you know, we try to be as responsive and as helpful as possible. So this went out again. And as well, it kind of gives a little narrative of a classroom's ventilation system, because everybody, you know, why is it blowing cold air? Well, SED requires us to have some fresh air. So this kind of explains it, whether or not people read it or not. But I think it has helped, all right? But some of the items that came out of the survey, one was about classroom temperature. And, I mean, the way I looked at it is, we actually had improvement with our rating regarding classroom temperature. We went from about 45% to 56%, and that's having a good to very good rating, all right? What's interesting is that this year, we've had about six heat complaints, okay? And about three of those were because it was too hot in a teacher's classroom, okay? So I, I was thinking that maybe it wasn't so much a matter of it being cold in the winter, but in those few days that we have in the fall time, or two days that we have in the spring where it gets really, really hot, I think this is a, I think it's an excessive heat complaint, okay? So our fan, as I was just mentioning, I don't think that was overly effective. I guess we'll see how, if, if with this, if we put more solar film on some of our southern-facing classrooms, whether or not that helps at all, I guess we'll see. I would maybe want to change some of the questions in the next survey, so maybe we can pinpoint exactly what some of the concerns are.
Can I make you pause right there? Are you saying that you don't think the temperature complaints are cold-related, that they're just heat-related?
Well, I, I know with the ones that we have gotten, we've gotten six, okay? And like I said, three of them were because it was too hot in the teacher's classroom, okay? And we've had other ones where we've gone there. Our custodians are very proactive during, every morning, they come in, they bring up a screen on their computer, and it shows them the entire footprint of the school, and, and you can see all the temperatures in all the classrooms. So at that time, when they're here, we should be at a temperature for the most part. So they're kind of being proactive and looking at those things. And yes, we've had mechanical problems, and we just had one for D wing where it was extremely cold there. We thought it was construction, there was actually a problem with that heater, so...
I'm going out on a limb here, but a lot of the students that I speak to, they're cold. And I've been at the middle school, the teachers are cold, they're bundled up. I'm cold when I'm at board meetings and other events. So there's definitely an issue with, with cold temperatures, and I thought we already discussed it, that we were going to like bring it up...
We did.
...a couple of degrees and...
We did.
Yeah. We did. So, so I guess, so how do I know about that, you know, specifically? You know, because everyone, everybody's room is different, you know, there's controls... You know, 'cause everyone, everybody's room is different, you know, it's controlled differently. So that's what I said at the beginning, where I can't fix it if I don't know it's not broken.
Right.
So, you know, I, I don't know if students should tell their teachers, and the teachers tell us. You know, what might be cold to me is hot to you.
I think it would be interesting, though, to, and I, I can't remember if we talked about this, but doing a kind of survey on just heating and cooling with teachers and students, and kind of taking it out of the survey, because it was not that high of a score as to comfort level for all. I mean, it went up, what, a little bit, but there, the buildings were very, variations in the different buildings and stuff. I, I still think that we need to focus a little bit more on that, and I don't want to lose sight of that. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that, or Jonathan?
We did talk, when we run over the survey results, about trying to identify, are people too hot or too cool, and all more specifics, which I think is what Greg's talking, referencing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, changing the question, but I think there is a consensus, quite a bit of consensus that there's, people are cold, especially when on those really cold, cold days, like students, and they may not individually single themselves out, but I think we should be proactive at least to get more information on that.
So we have never gone and met with a teacher that was cold, and said, you're at set point. Sorry, you gotta live with it, you know, at our sixty-nine degrees. Because there's, there's just a lot of variables. If you're in end room, you know, your room might be different, and exactly where the thermostat is. So, I mean, honestly, if a teacher's cold, we have bumped up his or her classroom, okay, just to accommodate. We just, I mean, so, I mean, we could talk about this more.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because just the way it was presented, it just seemed like it was more of a he-heat issue, and it seems like we have talked about that, the survey, with the survey.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I mean, I just go by the complaints that come in, and maybe that's what we gotta work on, on how do people, that's what I thought this flyer would kind of do. I mean, if you're cold, tell us, you know, don't, don't go, you know, with jackets on and that. You don't have to, all right?
Did you track the survey, like this sheet, and how many requests you're getting for a variety of items, not just weather-related, you know, if they're cold or hot, but maintenance items? And is it a useful tool, and are people using it, or are they still going around and using a different process?
So when we, when we have, we have a work order system, our online, and we track everything, and assignments, and buildings, and all that stuff. But a lot of people, for heat complaints, they're not gonna fill out a maintenance direct online, they're gonna call us, or they're gonna call their custodian, who, if they can't fix it, then they're gonna come to us. So we don't necessarily track that, because there's, we're just not getting that many, and, I mean, we can start tracking.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying.
I just didn't know if the form had, you, you saw the traction you were hoping for with requests through the track, not talking about heating or cooling, but just maintenance requests. Did it help with that, or?
The survey?
Not, no.
No, that, the school, the
The flyer?
No, you're talking about
The help, like a hotline, yeah, the work requests, the
Uh, the maintenance director, yeah. Oh, it's, it's been tremendous, 'cause, I mean, what's great about that is, if you're a teacher and you request something, you can track its progress, its acceptance, its denial, or the reasons, its progress, because as we assign it, they see that it's been assigned. They'll see whether or not, and when my staff completes it, they actually identify that it's complete, and an email goes to that teacher, and if that teacher says, it's not complete, you didn't put up that shelf, then we'll, we'll get a call, you know. So it's actually, it's, one of the nice things about it is that it does track the progress of whatever the situation is.
So it's been working well?
Yeah, yeah, online, yeah.
Thank you. I'm still thinking about the solar film, and I would just suggest that even if it's in the budget, maybe before buying more of it and putting it on more windows, we're gonna have some warm days coming up very, knock on, knock on wood, very soon. So we should be able to get a sense this spring whether or not it actually works.
Yeah, so considering that, these monies, we wouldn't be doing this till probably next fall, okay? We will have at least the, the springtime, hopefully a warm spring, you know, and we'll be able to assess at that point.
But we wouldn't be able to take it out of the budget this year?
No, but I'm just saying
We wouldn't know, because it would be after.
I'm just saying, let's, even if it's in the budget, let's not
Let's not spend it unless
Let's not spend it and buy it unless we find out. Let's not spend it on something that doesn't work.
Yep.
Yeah. How do people know to call you aside from this flyer? I mean, is it something that's announced? Are the flyers around the school? My query is more a matter of, it's one thing to tell people to contact you or their custodian, but it's another, you know, if you don't see it continually, or on a regular basis, out of sight, out of mind. So it's a lot easier to put a coat on and stay warm, rather than to, you know, make a complaint about temperature. So how do we get this information to students, to teachers, et cetera?
Well, hopefully the principals promote. I mean, understand, we are here to, to support the teachers, the facilities, and if you can be more comfortable, then that's gonna be conducive to learning and all that kind of good stuff. So hopefully the principals are doing their part, my custodians in the buildings are doing their part, 'cause they shouldn't be in their offices, they should be walking around and, you know, asking, you know, hey, do you need anything? 'Cause they know whether or not it's something that they do, or maintenance staff has to come and do that. Whether or not we can improve upon getting out there more. We walk the buildings, you know, we have monthly meetings with the principals, and usually following that meeting, they, they have a laundry list of things that they want to talk about. We may walk the building. A lot of times, if, if a teacher doesn't have students there, we'll, we'll go in and, you know, say how are things going, you know, any concerns or complaints. But there's three of us administrators, and, you know, there's only so much we can do out there, but.
What about, like, signs, like, little signs, if you see something in the bathroom? Like, a little sign that says, you know, you see something broken, contact, or outside in the hallways?
Well, most of, most of the, most of the students would report it. If they saw something or had a problem, they'd go to a teacher, or maybe a building administrator. A lot of the teachers might grab a custodian and say, you know, this, my room is freezing, and they would say, I'll get in touch with maintenance, or give them. But I also think that we, one of the, the BCTA does have teacher reps on the Health and Safety Committee that teachers can go to for a building rep. We just had someone through the middle school contact Greg about that. So there's, there's plenty of resources for ways for people to make a complaint or share a concern. It doesn't necessarily mean every teacher's gonna think to call Greg if there's a problem, but most of them would definitely reach out to a custodian or their administrator.
Yeah, and I could speak to the principals about this conversation, you know, to, I mean, we've spoken at faculty meetings before. We used to have our monthly maintenance meetings every, every two weeks, and we were going over the same things, 'cause two weeks isn't really that long, there wasn't anything really new. And that's why we end up going monthly, 'cause the online system is, is really nice, and so we don't necessarily have to have a face-to-face, because they can, they can, they can send it our way of, of the, the item that came up from the teachers.
Thank you.
Greg, I had two small questions about numbers earlier on. Slide fourteen had a four-thousand-dollar miscellaneous line. I missed my opportunity to politely interject.
That's equipment, right? Yes. So, so that is actually equipment under two thousand dollars. It's a 201 account, not necessarily identified at this point. It's always been carried in the budget, but we wanted to put it there because it was equipment. You know, it might be, we've purchased a lot of different things with that, you know, things that may come up operationally that we need.
Okay.
So it's more contingency?
Yeah, usually if something, if a small piece of equipment, battery drills, you know, smaller types of item that might be under the equipment, not supply, but equipment, we purchase it under that.
Okay. Yeah, and just because I don't remember, when we replace these vehicles, any revenue that we get
I don't get.
from auctioning the old vehicles aren't reflected in this part of the budget, right? They wouldn't be on his line, okay. So then, I think, either the slide before that, or two before that, there was what looked like a, maybe a ten-thousand-dollar increase in supplies, and I was wondering if we knew what was driving that number. It was oddly specific.
So, slide thirteen?
It's right there, slide twelve, custodial maintenance supplies.
Yeah, so this represents, I wanna say, about twenty-five, no, I think we've narrowed it down, maybe about twenty different supply categories, both custodial and maintenance. And we actually go through every single line item, and we look at what we spent for that line item over the past, I think we do about three, four years. And we looked at what we spent basically half-year, what do we anticipate spending on that, and basically come with adds and some tractions. So that was just the net of all of those supply accounts.
So there could be an increase in vendor cost with that, associated with that?
In vendor cost?
Vendor costs. So supplies that you're getting, the cost increase that could be incorporated into the increase?
Yeah, and it varies year to year. We have some pretty aggressive people that buy, and I don't wanna say wheel and deal, but paper supplies is, is pretty big. You know, toiletries, paper towels, and some we buy through Bowses, others we, we bid out. And we've seen quite the fluctuation in that market, I think in part because of the recycling. Let me see, the increase, oh, yeah, this, this was pretty much the reason. We ended up last year switching to organic fertilizer, okay? And basically, that was an, yeah, we saw quite an increase. I think that was about eight-thousand-dollar increase from what we spent. And then as well, we are thinking that with both new high school and middle school pools, with those new chlorination and filtration systems, that we might be spending more on, on those chemicals.
Okay.
But, yeah, now I remember that the, the organic fertilizer was pretty much the, the reason for that increase.
Thank you.
So, just to make sure, I think I know this, I wanna make sure. So you're asking for a total increase of forty-two, two oh six?
Correct.
But that's before the twenty-five, so
Correct.
if the twenty-five were to go through, we'd be looking at it at seventeen.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Thank you.
And just one last item, which concerns me on the survey, is the, the comment on bath restrooms, okay? Our approval rating actually went down from about fifty-seven percent down to about fifty-four percent in that rating. I've discussed this at our monthly custodial staff meetings with those supervisors. We are going to have them conduct more checks during the day, to make sure that supplies are stocked throughout the day. 'Cause even though you may stock it at night, some of these bathrooms are heavily used, and that you may run out, so they're gonna, they're gonna check them during the day. We're also gonna have them check in the mornings as well, to see if the night staff did the cleaning level and the expectations of, of what is, what is expected. I think last year, this comment, we have a lot of old bathrooms here at the high school and at Slengerland's. The bond, we're actually renovating, we've renovated eight bathrooms, which had a beautiful pink or yellow or whatever color tile that was. And right now, we're working in B to upgrade those, and we've done D, and G, we're walking, we're working on as well. So hopefully that, that'll help as well. But we will work with the custodial staff to see if certain things are put in place to improve upon that rating. And, I think that's it. Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So to wrap up, on our election date, we will have three Board of Education seats. Christine, Holly, and Meredith, who at the last meeting all announced that they are running again for school board, but they will appear then on the ballot, and any other candidates who turn in qualifying petitions by the deadline, as noted on the screen. Next up, on the eighteenth, we'll have Mr. Hurst and Ms. Johnson giving their presentations. Then we will try to lay it out for you with the final choices. Those decisions will need to be made at the April first meeting. Hopefully by then, we'll have an inkling of if there are any changes that benefit us on state aid. Don't hold breath, but we'll see. We would know by that date at any rate. And then moving on to the public hearing, meet the candidates night, and then the budget vote on the nineteenth. Okay, so that concludes the overview. Thank you.
Judy, is April one the, the drop deadline to have a budget?
I, I believe you might have, like, three more days, but it would mean calling a special meeting, so based on our scheduled meetings, April first is our date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who would like to speak to the board on an agenda item, please come forward to the microphone. Next, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
Shall move.
Second. Any discussion? And I'll just say thank you for the donations that are under this action item.
Especially the piano, which was used in the Slengerland's fifth grade play that they announced today. It's a very good piano.
Very nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through three.
Shall move. Second.
Any discussion? Actually, I just want to point out that under item three, the Bridge to College Mentor Program, on that list that is being approved, you will find both my name and Christine's name. So we are approving ourselves.
It's a great program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one and two.
Shall move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one and two.
Shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. At this time, if we have any visitors with us who would like to speak to the board on a non-agenda item, please come up to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is on March eighteenth at seven o'clock here at the high school, anticipating an executive session starting at six. On Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, at six P.M., we have a policy committee meeting here at the high school. The meeting after that is on Wednesday, April first, at seven o'clock here at the high school, anticipating executive session starting at six. And on Monday, April sixth, at five forty-five, there's a tentative facilities committee meeting. Is that right?
We, we were thinking about moving it to Tuesday. I don't, I didn't see the last email. I know Wendy said she didn't mind, but I don't know if we finalized.
I can't make it
Oh, you can't make it Tuesday?
I can't make it Tuesday.
Okay. We'll, we'll leave it there for now.
Okay, so for right now, it's on for April sixth. And then the board meeting after that is on Wednesday, April twenty-second, at seven, again, anticipating executive session starting at six o'clock. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, and pig students, don't forget to come up to sign out and get any signatures you need.